All right, welcome everybody to the February 24th City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission meeting. Thanks for everybody for being here. We will start with our agenda and discuss or review our minutes and have a motion for approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, this is a moment where you can come speak to the Planning Commission about items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you have something on your mind you want us to hear, please come forward. If not, we'll move on. All right, let's move on to announcements. Anything, Micah Catherine, anything to announce?
No, sir. We are looking at possibly changing the way we go about doing processes, but that's something that we are discussing both with the design professionals and we will be bringing back to you. Alderman Peterson has been involved in that as well, hopefully trying to make things easier, but that will be a several month process.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anything that anyone wants to bring to the attention of the Planning Commission as a non-agenda item for us to consider tonight? Okay, I see none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Currently, our consent agenda includes items seven through 10, 15 through 18. Everything else is non-consent. So, is there anyone in the audience, staff or commission that would like to pull items from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none there. Catherine, what item was-
Mr. Chairman, would we want to put the number 19 on the consent agenda to defer to the next work session?
Yes. So, we're going to add item number 19 to defer till the March meeting, whatever date that is. Let's see if you can add that to your consent agenda. All right, do I have a motion?
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And we will move on. We're going to change, we've got two members that are in an executive session right now, so we're going to shift, if it's okay with the commission, to look at item, I believe it's 13 first and hold on the City Hall discussion to see if we can get those guys back in here. So, we're going to roll to item number 13, which is Jamison Station PUD subdivision, regulating plan, section two and three.
Mr. Chairman, the Jamison Station concept plan was approved by BOMA in May of 2006 for 269 units and 33,100 square feet of non-residential space. Fifty-one of the dwelling units in all of the non-residential square footage were approved with the section one site plan. The remaining 218 dwelling units are being proposed with this regulating plan, which reconfigures the previously approved building layout. The applicant is also requesting a modification of standards to lower the required parking ratio from 2.25 spaces at the site to 1.95 spaces per unit. The applicant has included a parking study and staff has determined that the parking study does provide adequate justification and research to support the lower parking ratio of 1.95 parking spaces per unit. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the modification of standards and approval with conditions of the regulating plan.
Okay, all right. We apparently have some guests.
Actually, the board needs to adjourn.
Okay, then do we need to adjourn ours, I guess, or just put us on hold?
We can just stand behind you.
Okay.
I want to call the meeting, the special call meeting, back into order. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session. Motion seconded, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Excellent. I think history was just made. All right. Let's see, Emily, I think you had finished your discussion, just under the wire. All right, then we will go, is there anything else? Okay, then we will go to the audience. Is anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item that's not part of the application? By the way, Anne and-
13.
We're looking at item 13 first, then we'll roll back to the City Hall after that.
Good evening, I'm Ron Dooley, I live at 213 Franklin Road, just around the corner from this development. I guess that my concern, concern of several of my neighbors is the drastic change in the concept plan going from individually owned units to one big apartment complex on the second and third phase. And as I understand it from the applicant's submission, the primary concern there is the economic climate. He feels that it's necessary to change from individually owned units to an apartment As an ordinary citizen, I wasn't aware that that was a, something that could result in a major change in a concept plan that was developed with extensive debate, neighborhood input, by the way, extensive neighborhood input, and approval for a concept that was totally different from what we're being asked, you're being asked to approve tonight. And I guess I would ask you, if this had come to you in '06, the way that is being proposed as a change, would it have gotten the same consideration that you're being asked to give it tonight simply because of economic climate? You look at Hollingsdale Manor, just down the road from this development, it's experiencing the same economic climate. Are we going to go there and put another apartment complex on that development? So, I think I and my neighbors would have liked to have had some input into what's being proposed for these last two parcels of this property, and for that reason, we'd ask you to reject this application.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
I am a resident of the Jamison Station development, and we obviously are in sort of a distressed situation there. About 50 percent of the buyers did not close, and our community looks like an abandoned apartment. So, the residents of Jamison Station are very excited that a multi-use, family-oriented community might occupy those spaces and bring some vitality back to the community that we bought into. We have thousands of square feet of commercial space that has not been sold or leased, and we think the addition of lots of new residents on Liberty Pike would really help bring some activity and some rentals and possibly some sales of our units. So, I think as a resident of Jamison Station, we're very excited to have more residential units on Liberty Pike.
Thank you.
Kim Zimmer.
All right, anyone else?
My name's Melissa Archer. I'm an owner of one of the Jamison Station condo units, and I've been there for over two years awaiting the completion of that project and every day having to look at the vacant space under my unit that looks like an abandoned property. I'm also a real estate broker with 15 years' experience in Williamson County, and I know for a fact that it's impossible for a developer to get lending right now to build condo units. It's not going to be happening for quite some time. The best and highest use of this property right now wedged between a storage facility and railroad tracks is upscale apartment residential units. I'm familiar with Bristol Development's product. They build top-notch residential units, and I have no qualms about what they're proposing for the area, and I think most of the people that live in Jamison Station are very anxious to see more people living there, more people enjoying and using the factory, the farmer's market, and all of the things that drew us to that area in the first place. And I hope that you'll consider approving the plan as they've drawn it out. I've studied it. I think it's solid, and I think it will be a great addition to that part of Franklin.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, is there someone to represent the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Gary Vogren with Kaiser Vogren Design, representing the client, our applicant, Bristol Development Group. We're here to answer any questions you may have. We have members of the design team here with us and respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Anne?
I want to first talk about the, the request for modification of standards on the parking. You know, we have a requirement that, as far as I know, is the one that we have used for all developments, and for many reasons, I think it needs to stay as it is. I have read with interest some of their comments and some of the, I guess, the material that is in behalf, supporting their, their request. However, I will call your attention to what is page number 16 in that, I guess this is in the, in the document, item 13. If you notice, it's showing some reasons to support their, their request for a lower parking. If you look there, the very last item, the last, I should say, the last line on the top, the top table there, it's showing that they had 21 study sites, and they show that they're, you know, they talked about this percent, the 85th percentile only needing 1.94 vehicles per dwelling unit. If you look right below that, it says 33rd percentile, which I know means that 33 percent of those 21 are below this number, and they show a number of .68 vehicles per dwelling unit. Do not tell me there is any place in Williamson County where a third, a third of the dwelling units have .68 vehicles per dwelling unit. I mean, this means that what, one out of every three of them don't have a car, period there. And so, that certainly does not represent us. And, and that, that is what that 33rd percentile says, because that would be, as I say, seven units there. Nowhere do we have that. Nowhere do we have that. And so, I would, I am very concerned, in fact, I was concerned before I started looking into the numbers here, because I know that there is another apartment complex, at least one, here in Williamson County, where they require you to have kind of a sticker to say that you're going to park in their parking lots there. We have had a problem not having enough parking spaces, not that we have way too many. And if you think about it, there are no, you know, if, as they state here on the, the comments about the 85th percentile and things like that, and I think the staff made the comment, well, that would mean one, one seventh of the time, you could have a problem, you know, getting, getting all the, the parking pla, the parking needed there. But, but the thing is, there's no alternative parking here. I mean, you know, it, it talks about, something about shared parking, and it goes on to say, well, we don't really have shared parking here. But, I mean, you're talking, there's no on-street parking, there's nothing else out there. So, I think we need to be very careful to make sure that we have an adequate number of parking places that goes with this. And, and I understand that the staff has recommended approval of that, but, but as I say, I, I think that, that our zoning ordinance requirement is, is something that we probably need to stick to.
Without belaboring the point, I will agree with, with Commissioner Peterson. I felt the same way about the parking. I think it's way too small for this, this development.
Okay.
And my other comment is about the floodplain. It did state that there, there was floodplain in here, however, I mean, I know this is very small print, but I could not find where it was located on there. So, I, I would like to request that that be shown on the picture.
If you could flip the slide, it's hard to show on this graphic. If you go to, say, the next, like, C2 or C3.
Okay. Okay, well, I, when we get to it, if we can get to it, maybe it shows right there, maybe? Right there? Yes. Okay.
There's a dark line that kind of goes in shaded white from this little-
Okay. Well, you know, I mean, I knew that's, that's where it was, but as I say, I couldn't see this. I, I had heard that during the May flood of la, of last year, that, well, we ought, well, probably most of us know that one end of Eddie Lane was flooded, you know, and it stayed that way for some time. I had, I had heard from somebody fairly recently that the other end also was flooded. I called today to ask, this was a person who was on Eddie Lane during the flooding time, and the water was over the road there on that end, too. And so, I, even though much of that is for detention, there is a building proposed right in that corner, is there not?
No.
So, what's on there then for-
The building's right here, is that what you're referring to?
Well, I was looking at the part that shows a little bubble there on, on L0, I guess it is, or it shows some kind of bubble on there?
That's the approved concept plan.
Okay.
That was approved in '06, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, look at L3, I think that's the more current proposed plan. I don't see anything planned in there other than maybe a trash compactor, but that's outside of the buffer as well.
Oh, is that what that, is that what the little-
C2 shows it, or a-
Detention pod.
Well, I, wait, I've got L2, let me go over to C2.
L3 is pretty clean, too. Probably the cleanest one to look at.
But it doesn't show the detention pod.
C, C2 has the grading as well with the building and the trash compactor.
So, is this just, just for, is that FFE 662?
That's the building, if you're referring to that. That's the building. The only two structures there are the-
So, there's nothing proposed to be built in the floodplain?
No. I mean, there is, there's the stream, then there's a, there's two 30-foot buffers, which is a total of 60 feet to the top of the bank, which is shown in this line here. That's the 60 foot, and then there's the detention, then there's the compactors, then there's the building. So, is this what you're referring to, this little piece here?
I saw, but I, I did not, as I say, I couldn't tell that the building was up a great deal higher.
Yes, it's the elevation of the road at Liberty Pike.
And so, is that being, what do you say, is that being cut and filled from the detention to build that higher? I'm just asking.
No, no. We're just matching, those building elevations are basically at the same grade as Liberty Pike exists currently.
Okay. Well, since we had so much problem over in that area, I wanted to make sure that that, that was not, and as I say, I looked at it, could not find where the floodplain was there.
Gary, you want, you want to address the parking question at all, or?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Charles Carlisle with Bristol Development Group. I'd like to just point out that we can meet the city zoning code requirement for parking. Our request for this is to simply avoid needlessly paving paradise, so to speak. We have developed on our own 5,700 multifamily units, very much like the ones we're talking about doing here, and we have never had a parking ratio even approach the 1.95 cars per unit that we're asking for. If we were doing this based on what we believe the market demand is, we would have a ratio probably another 10 or 15 percent lower than that, but just trying to be as cautious as we can and do something that we felt like, I think if you really get into the study, what you'll find is that they quoted four different sources, not just this one, and that the highest level among all of them was the 1.95, and that hit the 100 percent demand level in the most important, which was the International Transportation Engineers' One of the things I think you have to take into consideration is the type of, of units that we plan to build and the type of residents that we hope to attract. Unlike many apartment communities in suburban areas that have a lot of three-bedroom units and therefore might have higher parking requirements, our mix is 50 percent one-bedrooms and 50 percent two-bedrooms. Our experience is that about 80 to 90 percent of our one-bedroom residents are singles. So, that means they have one car, not two. They certainly will have visitors from time to time, and we allow for that in our own estimates of what we need. Two-car unit, two, two resident units usually do have two cars, and we allow for that in our ratio. And of course, you also get some diversity of parking. We don't reserve parking in here, so the space that might be occupied at 10:00 in the morning with somebody who's at home, you know, if they leave and go to school and somebody else comes and parks there at 4:00 in the afternoon or 7:00 at night, that space gets more than one used. So, we can, just by meeting the request we have for the modification of standards, we can save somewhere around a half an acre or more of land that we would otherwise have to pave that will, in our belief, never be used for parking. We've got a bank and equity partners who will be spending millions of dollars on this community, and we would never build something that would not meet parking demand and do it in a generous and user-friendly way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, perhaps I should ask the staff, then, I'm assuming that there were reasons that we have the parking requirements that we have. Would we be considering changing our parking requirements if, you know, if this, if this is the, I guess we would say, the norm? I certainly do not feel like we, we have a completely generous-
I don't think we would consider changing our parking requirements based on what we've seen in the city. I think that this applicant has presented that their experience with their type of development is a little different from some of the other apartments that we've seen in the past, and that in their experience, this is what they need, but I wouldn't say that across the board, that's necessarily true.
And I would say the mix of one and two-bedroom, in particular, the, the number of one-bedroom plays into that allowance for a reduction in the number of parking spaces.
But our, our rule is that we would have two parking places for every one-bedroom and then a half of a space for each additional bedroom, is that right?
That's correct.
But we, we've been following that for, I think, a number of years.
There have been modifications granted for parking, including the original Jamison Station, that matrix that was approved that reduced the overall parking.
But you know, that also hedged commercial in it, though.
That's correct.
Which makes a difference, and that's where the shared parking comes in.
And a parking structure that was part of-
That is, that is true, too. So, to me, that is different.
Let me ask, just as a, maybe a better clarification, Gary, could you note if there is room to add that additional numbers that the gentleman mentioned, where would it be? And, I mean, one option could be that we would allow it, and if market demand required more, then they would agree to, to develop those spaces where they can if we, if we wanted to reduce the required amount, but allow them to, to fill in where there are spaces to be filled in later.
Well, in looking at the site plan, we would basically just fill up the islands that we have as green space for trees and start making those smaller in terms of the site plan. Given the dimensions of the site and the location of the buildings and parking is very efficient in terms of just distribution, things of that nature, it would basically just chew up planting islands, some of the formal, some of the smaller open spaces we have in front of buildings, things of that nature, but, you know, the, the alternative is also to, that we probably would do anyway, would be some impervious surface as part of the parking, as part of the stormwater quality plan.
But you don't have the choice to take out some of the planting islands, they're required by our landscape for-
Right. Yeah, we, we would have to meet those minimum standards, sure.
Yeah, so I'm, I don't know if there were obvious places-
We did, yeah. The one thing we did not include in the parking standard count was tandem spaces, basically those spaces that are behind garage units. We didn't count those towards meeting the requirements. If we used those, that would get the number very close, but we still would have to pick up some more spaces to get that if we need to.
Which I know we've allowed in the past.
Oh, I, I mean, I think the, the, the parking behind the, the garages has been used many times.
Uh huh.
I would certainly, I would certainly think that would be acceptable.
Okay.
So, really, there might not be that many that you would have to add.
Potentially.
Which is what, what you're saying. Okay.
What do you want to make an amendment?
I guess I want to move that we not allow the modification of standards for parking, especially now that they've said that they really have a number of extra spaces that are, that are parked, because we, on, on many things, we use that space behind the garage as counted as parking.
Right, right. Okay.
I second that.
All right. Moved and seconded as an amendment to the main motion, is there any discussion?
I would just still argue that if we could avoid putting blacktop down where it's not necessary and keep additional green space, and we can meet the requirements of that as recommended by staff, I would support the modification.
But then, on the other hand, I mean, if you want to go down that route, they could just build less units. I mean, that would do the same thing. I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, if you go that route, you could just build less units. So, I think we defeat the purpose of our, of our parking standard. I'm like, Anne, I have never been to an apartment complex anywhere in Franklin or Williamson County where there was ample parking, not after 6:00. Never been there. Show it to me. So, I'm just saying, I understand what you're saying, but then, on the other hand, we could say just build one less building, and that would take care of it, too, if we were talking about green space.
And this development doesn't seem to be the standard, as you would think of an apartment complex.
But it, we, we have, we have other apartments that have one and two-bedroom apartments.
You'd be interested to know how close they can get if they count those tandem spaces.
I'd like to know what that is. If you're, if you're counting those spaces that aren't otherwise already counted, instead of a 1.95, maybe you've got 2.2 of or something like that already that is, without giving them green space and without having to recalculate your detention requirements and dealing with additional stormwater runoff and those kinds of things.
Mr. Chairman, Dwight Kaiser with Kaiser Vogren Design. I just wanted to point out that, as Gary's indicated, we have studied the plan thoroughly, contemplating that this may come up. As it's been pointed out, we are trying to be green-friendly, if you will, to reduce pervious pavement, impervious pavement wherever possible. As Gary pointed out, the tandem spaces, and we have numerous garages here, I think they counted somewhere around 60-some, Gary, do you recall offhand? You know, automatically starts pushing that up. The, the roundabout to the north, or the northern end of the project itself, we've looked at that, it would erode into the, the open space that we've indicated there, but we can certainly balance that out. There'd be more parking pushed up into there, actually where it's not necessarily needed, because we, we look very closely at the parking distance, if you will, from the individual units. So, you know, at the end of the day, sure, we can provide all the parking that we need. You know, it's kind of like the mall where, you know, in my opinion- You know, it's kind of like the mall, where, you know, in my opinion, we're putting in parking that just isn't necessary, and we're contributing to environmental problems, flooding, as it's been pointed out, as opposed to actually being a little bit more realistic in what the required parking or the parking demands really are.
Just one clarification about that. While the tandem spaces weren't counted, and we can meet the city ratio with the amount of impervious surface that we show here, if you approve the modification of standards, what that will allow us to do is reduce the amount of impervious surface that's shown on that plan. As an example, if you look at up at the very top, the last little bubble of parking, that's about the equivalent amount of space that we would be taking out of impervious surfaces through the site, if you would allow the modification of standards. And so it's not a matter of not being able to meet it, it's just a matter of wanting to pave less land. And we could certainly, if there's land there, to add those spaces back, and believe me, we'll add them a lot faster than you ever would if we had the demand for them. And we're in the business of pleasing customers, but we just don't think that's necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussions on the amendment to the main motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right, looks like a tie, and I'm going to vote no as well. So we're back to the main motion?
Well, let's look at it whenever it gets built, because I unfortunately have had the same experience where when I have been to apartment complexes here in Williamson County, I haven't seen a lot of extra spaces.
Okay, so we're back to the main motion, any other discussion on the main motion?
Yeah, maybe a question, too, because I know Anne and I were coming in late, and we may have missed some of the public comments. I'm assuming from the public comments that all of the residents in Jameson Station are for this change, is that what we're understanding? Is that...
That's what we heard.
There was a neighborhood person who spoke in opposition.
Two individuals, and they both spoke in favor of it.
Okay.
And there was one president that, oh, Franklin Roosevelt, spoke against it.
All right, any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Then, if you, if we pass this modification of standards, does it mean you take out some of the parking that you have planned? It sounded like it.
Like I said, it was more of the tandem spaces more than anything.
But I just heard that we could have green space where parking was planned at that little tip. Was that the comment that was made? I think it was.
If we added all those spaces.
So then, are you going to count the tandem spaces and then take out some of the spaces that are shown here? I mean, I'm asking because that's what I understood it was said, that, you know, that they could take out some of the spaces.
Can you give us a number, based on the current plan with the tandem, what that ends up being as a ratio?
I think about 64 to 66 spaces that we would not need that could be distributed through the site.
That's right, yeah, it's approximately 60 or a little bit over 60 we could accommodate in terms of tandem spaces.
And so you would take 60 out of what you've shown on here? That's what, I thought that was what was said.
I think that's what was said, and I think that's problematic.
Is the plan you're showing including the modification of standards or not?
Thank you.
It is not.
The count that we submitted does show that, but we didn't count all the spaces, the tandem spaces and things like that, we didn't count in our count, and we didn't need them for that. So by simply counting the tandem spaces, we could get to the zoning code, well...
So I need to be clear, okay, because I'm not really clear here, okay? The plan that we had, where you requested the modification of standards, you hadn't considered the tandem, right? The tandem came up tonight. So now that we have brought up the tandem, you'll be taking some out, well, the modification would allow you to delete some that are shown on the plan.
That's exactly right.
I don't believe that that was staff's understanding with our recommendations. We recommend approval of the plan as shown, which does not delineate tandem spaces, and it wouldn't have a change to the parking shown on this plan post-approval. So we would expect the parking to stay as-is, and if they wanted to add some delineation of tandem spaces, that would just increase their parking count. But we wouldn't expect to see spaces removed from this existing plan, so...
No, if we added all the tandem spaces, we would meet the city requirements.
Right, but you're, just to clarify, you're not planning to remove any parking spaces from the regulating plan that's shown?
No.
Do we need to formalize that in an amendment to the main motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think there's some confusion, and we would like to, you know, a year down the road, be able to look back and know exactly what this modification is affecting.
Because there's a disparity between the plan and the number that's been quoted, it sounds like, if we include the tandem. Well, does anybody want to craft an amazing amendment to the main motion that will carry us for the years beyond?
And, Mr. Chairman, staff would like, if they're going to count the tandems, to show it delineated on the plan.
As an added condition of approval.
But that would mean, then, that they couldn't take out what's shown here.
That's not what they just said, though. That's not what they said.
They say we stay as-is?
That's not what they said.
Stay as-is? Which means that...
The plan stays as-is.
400 and what was it?
425 is provided.
425?
That was stated.
Okay, that would stay, and then any tandem spaces would just be extra.
Added to that.
We would ask that staff that they show where those tandem spaces are and maybe include a separate count of the tandem spaces, but not really include that in their provided surface parking calculation, just so that we can distinguish between the two. It'd just be essentially added, just extra spaces, those tandem ones.
Okay, so how do we say that, then?
We need an added condition.
In the site plan, they say the same as submitted.
So in essence, Emily, what you're suggesting, then, is that we stay with the modification of standards, the 1.95, but we request a full count of the tandems.
The requirement says they provide the same number, but that they just delineate where those tandem spaces may be, just to give us some comfort that there is that available space, but we won't really look at that as part of their provided parking necessarily, but we would know that there is space for cars to park there, that we wouldn't really consider that part of the provided parking in this situation.
Well, let me ask you, have you counted, and is it 425?
My first count, there was 425.
425, the many, okay. So in other words, the motion would be that the parking spaces delineated here would all remain?
425, maybe.
For the submitted site plan.
On the submitted, okay, submitted on the regulating plan.
All right, proper motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do you want to add on that, and you would like to have a separate count for the tandem spots?
Okay.
That should not be applied towards...
Yeah, that should not be applied toward the...
That shall not be, thank you. A separate count of the tandem parking places that would not be...
Applied towards the original.
Applied toward the 425.
Okay, Scott, you accept that as your second?
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded to amend the main motion, all in favor, well, discussion, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Back to the main motion, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, we're going to roll back then to item number 11, Franklin City Hall.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request by the architect, Manuel Zitlin, and the City of Franklin, for rezoning of the property that is currently the property of City Hall and its immediate surroundings, for rezoning from civic institutional to regional mixed-use district. And staff is aware that regional mixed-use district has quite a few uses available to it in the zoning ordinance. We will say that since this property is owned by the City of Franklin, and it is unlikely that any of those uses would take place, other than those uses that are delineated for the new City Hall and hotel residential project. Staff is asking that you consider this rezoning and rezone the property. A concept plan will follow immediately.
All right. Anyone in the audience, other than applicants, wants to speak to this item? If you'll come forward, state your name and where you live, and we'll give you about two minutes to speak.
My name is Greg Penman. I represent St. Philip Church, just on Second Avenue. We appreciate the relationship and the shared parking and being neighbors with City Hall, and we are fully in support of a new City Hall, as well as a hotel and what it brings to downtown Franklin. We would just recommend or ask the planning commission to consider a limitation to both the elevation, the height of proposed facility, as well as a limitation of the maximum number of rooms in the hotel, preferably keeping it around in the 40 to 50 number, so as to not generate any parking or traffic concerns in the area. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
I'm Manuel Zitlin, architect, and with me are Bill Barclay, developer, Chris White is from Hawkins Partners, and Kevin Gangway from Civil Site Design. We've been working with the planning staff over the last couple of months, working through any issues they had, and I believe we've resolved them all. So we're here, really, if there are any questions, but appreciate your support.
Great, thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I wanted to say, I certainly appreciate what our planning director stated about the uses, because I had pulled my uses out of the zoning ordinance, and I saw that regional mixed-use is wide open there, so that is something to be careful about on the rezoning.
Would you like to see your City Hall taken down and a gas station is placed?
Oh, that wasn't the, that wasn't the most objectionable.
Sure, there's others. All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The second item, Resolution 2011-13, in Franklin City Hall, PUD subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, this is a concept plan, and I want to make it very clear that it is a concept plan, that we are anticipating that when we get to the regulating plan, we will have far more information. At this point in time, we are simply looking at a concept that is in its beginning stages for a hotel, a City Hall, and residential property, along with its supporting parking. You know, and it's obvious from the concept plan, staff recommendations, there will need to be some information on parking, need to be additional information on traffic. We will receive all of that information at the regulating plan phase. At this point in time, we are simply looking at the concept plan for those uses and a idea of where they would be located.
Okay, all right. Anyone in the audience, other than the applicant, want to speak to this item? Quiet group tonight. All right, anyone representing the applicant? Manuel, you want to say anything?
And I think we're Manuel Zitlin, and we're certainly in agreement with staff that this will be a collaborative process, collaborative process, and we'll be working with uses that are appropriate for the site and the city, and have already done a lot of work to deal with scale issues and how it fits into the neighborhood.
Great, thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Yes. Well, first of all, parking's already been mentioned. I did not see in here, but maybe I just missed this, whenever this was discussed before, there was talk of an underground parking garage to handle the parking for the hotel. Is that still a part of this concept plan?
My understanding is, at this point, parking, both parking and traffic studies are required as one of the conditions for the regulating plan, and there's some discussion whether or not, you know, an underground parking garage, or the extent that we were talking about before, will actually be needed. So I think that, again, would be an issue that was explored at the regulating plan level.
Well, let me say right away, I think parking is a big concern there, and it's not just on Sundays. You know, whenever I first heard about this, I heard underground parking was going to handle this, and I think that, first of all, I am concerned about the, some things that I have heard about the water table being very high here, and that underground parking aren't any underground, I guess, might be of a concern. But I very definitely say to you, parking is a very big concern in this particular area, and it can't just, you know, overflow to the parking garage that's out here, even though it is not as full as some of the other parking garages in the area. So that is one concern that I very definitely have. Something else that will be addressed at a regulating plan would be the traffic, proposed traffic generated, and whenever I looked back at the, I think this is LC, let's see, 1 point, maybe 1.1 or 1.2, it shows here project impact on street networks, and it doesn't even mention Third Avenue, as far as I can tell. It talks about 20 percent of the traffic being distributed to Hillsborough Road, 20 percent to Highway 96 West, which I find hard to believe, to be honest with you, and 20 percent to Highway 96 East, and it talks about the ADT here, but it doesn't say anything about this street right out here, Third Avenue, which has a great deal of traffic on it already, and I think that is going to be a major concern, even though there will be many other ways to access this, if you're still talking about 5,000 extra trips a day. I tried to go on to see what a traffic count was on Highway 96, and it says in the central business district, so I'm assuming that's got to be somewhere close here. It said in 2010, it was only 5,730, so if you're talking about putting another 5,700 on it, you would be doubling it. I find that hard to believe, that it's only that, but as I say, when I looked on the traffic count in the station, you know, that's what it said. Again, I don't know where that is, other than the fact that it says State Route 96, and it does say Franklin Central Business District. It didn't tell that. So that business about the distribution of traffic obviously will be a very important part of looking at this at the next stage. Another concern that I have in terms of, this is really not traffic, it's more of a traffic layout, I think that there definitely needs to be some assurance that there are adequate turning movements for utility and service vehicles, because when you look at this as the, on the proposed plans here, and I'm looking, I am looking at LC 1 dot 1 here, it shows a very small new street local, and they're supposed to be turning in to have loading services, I'm assuming for the hotel. I do not believe that the trucks that you would need, what is it called, utility and service vehicles, would be able to make these, that would not, this would not be an adequate turning radius for that. So I'm very concerned about that, that part of it, and that has got to work, has absolutely got to work.
You know, the first thing I thought when I looked at this was, woo, I need to go look at City Hall again. This is a lot of, gosh, City Hall, City Hall's not that big, okay? And when I look at this, I am blown away. I know we're just looking, we're just conceptually looking at things now, but I totally agree with it, to have the streets that are in, my goodness. I just think that, I'm really concerned about this. I think it's something we really need to look at, with the streets, it looks like you may get a half a car down them. This place is not that big, guys.
What, 6A?
What's six-eighths?
But anyway, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about, you know, we do need to properly utilize the city's property, okay? But I don't know, I think we really need to look at how much we're planning on putting in here. I, I really do have a concern about that. And with, okay, traffic right now, okay? And then think about what this is, so we really need to look at all of this, I think, before we go too far down the path.
Do you have some comments about traffic? Thank you.
Yes. The traffic data you have with the concept plan is, is basically sketch information at this point. The, the trip generation data is, does, does not deduct the amount of trips already using City Hall. It's strictly the overall new use without deducting what's already occurring here on this block. And then the, but, but the detailed traffic impact study would make that deduction. Okay, now, the distribution of the traffic on the various streets connecting with downtown is generally based on the amount of traffic already on those streets. So what the consultant has done is just kind of replicate the, the current pattern of the directionality of cars already entering and leaving downtown. That, that's the basis for that.
Could I ask you a question? Because they have the street classifications of major arterials, and it's got Fifth Avenue on here, it doesn't have Third? Why is that?
Okay, well, Fifth Avenue, Hillsborough Road are considered the same street.
Right, I understand that.
And then Highway Ninety-Six East and Third Avenue are considered the same street.
But there's a definite different traffic count further east than there is right here in this, you know, we have, don't we have some specific counts?
Oh, yeah.
For some of the other little areas?
Yes.
I think that certainly needs to be brought in, what we're looking at.
Right, and another thing that will kind of complement when they do the detailed traffic study is that the city is doing a signal timing upgrade in the central business district. And it just happened to be the same consultant who's doing the city's timing study, as is hired by this applicant. So the data will, will come together in that way.
All right, good.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have one more thing here. I noticed that there have been some live work units been proposed here. I guess I have the question, where in the area have live work units been, I don't want to say successful, but been able to work? Because I know that some, some other area, well, we've just been talking about Jamison Station, which is live work, some of those are live work. I know that in West Haven, they had originally proposed some lift work, but I think they, they've never brought any of those in, because there wasn't any, I guess, demand for them. Of course, that's a different situation. But I'm just saying, what, what do we have that makes us think they will be success, they would be successful here?
All right, I have to piggyback on that. My question was about the live works, they look like they're about fifteen feet deep.
Oh, dear.
So is the, is the, and I know this is a concept plan, and it's going to be refined, there's not an intention that that would slide under into and take apart of the parking garage, correct? Okay, all right.
Would it? Will or would not?
I'm sorry?
Are you saying there would or would not?
Would not, is what he's saying.
The, the live works are based on some examples, and I think in Atlanta, that where they were used as parking garage liners to take a, you know, basically take a inactive facade that's not contributing to the city and add basically a, an affordable unit where somebody could have an office or retail space downstairs and live above it. And fifteen feet is a fairly typical urban width for a townhouse, so it's that idea of taking, you know, really trying to get some more density and activity there. And I also would like to say that in response to Ms. Peterson's, and I guess Ms. Allen's concerns about traffic, so we certainly agree with that, and that's probably going to be one of the first things that we do as we move forward in the regulating plan, is get the traffic engineer, traffic consultants and parking consultants input into this process before we really do much more design, because that, that's one of the key things that's going to make this work, that it flows right and it's not an impact on the street. So we, we share your concerns, and certainly, that'll be a big, big part of the design.
And can we say, the city is also kind of a co-applicant in this, and if you remember, we have regulations where we've said the parking requirements for the, the, in fact, any of the core city, I guess, don't have to exactly provide specific numbers of parking places that somewhere else you would have to show up, however, you know, would have to show very specifically what they are. I, I want to tell you, if you're talking about extra parking for this, I don't think that it's just going to be absorbed by the current parking that we have. I, I think, I think it must have its, not designated parking, but it, but it must have parking that is specifically for this, because if you're talking about a hotel, if you're talking about a restaurant, those are, those are two things that do generate a great deal of traffic, and it's not necessarily something that you're going to be able to share, and because the people will prob, could probably still be there whenever people come in to work. And so, as I say, I, I think we, we made it, we need to make sure that there is dedicated parking associated with this that doesn't turn what we have here already, which is sometimes tight parking, you know, to, to get to the tipping point on that. Even though in this area, we probably, you know, I think they said if there's parking within like a mile and a fourth or something like that, what was the, something that, a mile? Yeah, you know, because we were talking about some, some restaurants out on Columbia Avenue, and there wasn't necessarily dedicated parking on the particular parking lot. So I, I, you know, I have a lot of concerns about, about this, and, and I think it, I think that it has to be, it has to be perfectly workable before, you know, we, we go off on something that, you know, just sounds good.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Here, Roger.
Just relative to the overall function of City Hall, I've, we're giving up roughly half of the space that, that we own and occupy and park on. Does this allow us sufficient space to contain planning departments, codes departments? I notice that there, it looks like most of these structures are four, four-story buildings, so I assume we make up some multi, multi-stories, but it's...
Some of it would be made up by multi-stories. I think that the layout of this would, is still probably being studied, and, you know, we are sure that they'll be able to fit everybody, how that goes and what the layout is, and whether there's more open spaces than there are offices, all of that still has to be decided.
Is there, is there a number of how many rooms in the, in the hotel are, are proposed?
The, I think in terms of the City Hall program, the, the initial space planning was based on the, the programming study the city commissioned a few years ago, and I think it, was it twenty, a twenty-year growth plan or a fifty-year growth plan? It was, the script footage in this proposal is based on the, I think, I think it was fifty years, it was based on the long-term growth plan needs of the City Hall, so when it first opens, there'll actually be, you know, quite a bit of expansion space built into it. And I'm not sure the, is it a hundred hotel rooms on the...
Was it a number of one-hundred-and-seventeen? Does that sound right? One-hundred-and-eighty at one time.
Sounds an exact number for early planning. I think one-seventeen.
As I say, I think their, their areas are...
I like to go right in. Parking is a, is definitely, definitely an issue.
And also, I'd like for us, you know, while, while we're talking all these big, big concepts, also, I'd, I'd much rather we err on the side of having too much office space, because I tell you, we don't need to do this, and then ten years down the road, say we need a bigger City Hall. We need to err on the side of having too much City Hall and, and smaller hotel than, than vice versa.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
My last comment has to do with cost, money. This, you know, I had, I learned right away, and it's one of the first times I ever looked at a capital improvements plans whenever I was actually voting on it, I said, there are more worthy projects than there's money to spend, and this is another place where the money for this, and even if it is built and we have a long lease pay, I mean, you know, this is, this is paid for now. So, I, I mean, I'm saying the money is a concern, too.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes.
Of course, all right, well, let's, let's vote on the, the plan, then. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
I want to vote no, because I just have too many reservations.
Okay. Disapprove with Ms. Peterson voting no. All right, let's move on to the Simmons Ridge, item fourteen, PUD subdivision regulating plan.
Mr. Chairman, the zoning and revised concept plan for this development was approved by BOMA in November and December of 2010. This regulating plan was deferred at the January Planning Commission meeting due to insufficient information provided by the applicant regarding the point of connection for the water, and the applicant has since provided that information, and staff now wishes to recommend approval with conditions of the regulating plan.
All right. Do anyone in the audience wants, other than the applicant, wants to speak to this item? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Doug Hill, on behalf of the applicant owner, we've reviewed staff's recommendations and accept them, and request this body's approval as submitted.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Move for approval with staff's recommendations. Second.
Move and seconded, any discussion?
I just have one question, and, and the garage doors recess from the front facade a minimum of twenty feet does fit our current design standards, and, and those other things that you said. Just wanted to make sure about that, because when I first looked at it, I didn't recognize.
Good, all right. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Your motion for adjournment?
Salute.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roger.